September 2021, Town of Poughkeepsie Zoning Board of Appeals. If you would all please rise for the Tread of Allegiance. All right, tonight's meeting is hybrid four bat. You all can appear here personally. You're either used by your phone or Zoom, or you can watch on the cable network. So take a roll call. Diane Levitt?
Here.
Tony Dig?
Here.
I'm here. Art Grace?
Here.
Larry Sloman?
Here.
Christine?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
Tony Straka?
Here.
And Simona? All right, there is a quorum. If anyone has to recuse themselves, Tony Straka will be a voting member tonight. Tonight, the Zoning Board of Appeals is here to allow people to try and get some relief from any zoning that affects a project they would like to do. Tonight's meeting, or every meeting goes, the applicant goes forward, says what they want to do, they're sworn, all testimony is under oath. There may be some questions from the board members. The public will have an opportunity to make comments. Tonight's, the comments should be limited to about three minutes. When we get to the end of the agenda, then we'll deliberate. No more evidence is taken at that time, and we'll vote. Member, the public, the applicant, the neighbors, concerned people. You can either wait till the end of the evening, the end of the meeting, to find out what happens, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning and find out. So with that, that brings us to all business. Item number one, Stewart Shops. May I make a motion to adjourn that to the January 10, 2022 meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? All right, motion is carried. The next is number two, Dawn Gangl, 58 Aldi Drive. Is that applicant here? Come on up. Hi. Okay, can you speak a little closer to the microphone, or make sure it's on? No, there's a switch right on the back. I thought I turned it on. Okay. Yes? Yeah?
So we were here for a meeting on October 13th.
Right.
And it was suggested that we get a survey done.
Right.
Which we have done.
Okay, and what does that show, the distance that you actually, the variance you actually need?
It shows, on one part of the platform, it shows four feet, eight inches from the platform to the property line. And then the other end, where the shed is, is seven feet, seven inches.
All right, so the closest is four feet, eight inches from the side lot line?
Correct.
Okay. And I thought there were some other questions about the height, the platform, and whether or not you needed railings. Did you speak with the building department about that?
I did. Anything over 30 inches needs a railing.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
Anything over 30 inches needs a railing.
Okay, and it's below 30 inches, or it's above 30 inches?
We will need a railing on part of it.
Okay.
Correct.
And did you, you have a copy of the survey for the record?
I just have a paper that they wrote on, but there are flags marking the property. I have some photos on my phone as well.
Okay, it's... But it's an actual survey, though?
Yes.
Okay. I just kind of noticed that it's not being broadcast.
It's not being broadcast on cable?
Well, that's...
I'll check.
Okay. Can you, Sonya, can you, can you either drop off a copy of that, or can you?
You can have.
Oh, okay.
I can take a picture of this, and you can have it.
Okay.
So...
The gentleman who did it was from Robert Oswald Surveying.
So four feet, eight inches.
So we're asking for a five foot, four inch variance.
Okay, and that's a little bit less than you were asking before, right?
I believe so. I don't remember exactly what was on the paper.
I think I have it as five feet, five and a half feet, so five feet, six inches.
Yeah, so now five, four is what we're asking for.
Five feet, four inches. Okay. Christine, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
All right.
No, no questions.
Phyllis?
So when I went out in October, there was a lot of wood that was all on the side of the house. Is that for the proposed project?
No, that was what was in the backyard before we... That's all gone. That was all trash.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Just to clarify, you had it surveyed and marked. I drove by there the other day. You're saying the closest point is what?
The closest from the side of the platform is five feet, I'm sorry, four feet, four feet, eight inches, I think. It's on the paper.
Okay, and it was... And what's it supposed to be? I mean, what a regular...
Ten feet.
Ten feet, okay, all right. That's why I wasn't clear on. Okay, thanks.
How much of the platform is going to need to be enclosed with railing?
Just a small section, the front part of it, and then the side going down to the back will have a fence abutting it.
The side adjacent to your neighbors?
Correct. And then we have a shed. So there's just one small corner that will need to have the railing because the other part of it is only about a foot off, or 12 inches, 14 inches off the ground at that point. Now, we do have a patio that we have there as well, that's between the house porch and that, that we use as well. So that's why the platform is out where it is.
Diane?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
All right. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment this? First, we'll start with the people that are here. Anyone that wishes to comment on this? Why don't you come on up? Why don't you let that person have a seat? Please state your name.
Lisa Walkoff. I live next door.
Ms. Walkoff, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes. So I actually have a question.
Okay.
If I got a survey and it's different from theirs, what happens?
Then you go to a different court. And they argue about which survey is right. Sometimes that happens, but...
Yeah, well, from...
Do you have a belief that somehow that survey is inaccurate?
Some of it, some of it. I have a... And I spoke to Steve about this, a survey of the property that was from 1952. As you face our houses, there's a telephone pole in between the two properties. My survey shows that the, my property is more to the right than the surveyor put it, where he put his stake. About 12 inches.
So you think that this platform is closer to your property line than...
No.
Or farther away?
No, I'm talking about, one of the reasons I don't think it's totally correct.
Okay.
Is at the front. And this has nothing to do with the depth right now.
Okay.
Where he put the marker, my map shows my property being more to the right than he shows it.
Okay.
He shows it being, if you're facing the houses, to the left of the telephone pole. My map shows it being, say, a little more than center of the telephone pole.
Okay, so here's what would happen. Let's say we granted their request for a variance to be five feet, four inches from the side, or four feet, eight inches from the side lot line.
Yeah, which I'm sure you're going to do.
Okay.
Neither of them are going to.
And you decided to have it surveyed again, or you want to rely on the survey that you have because you think it's too close, then you would have to go to another court, and they would figure out which survey is more accurate.
I do it for the point.
I think that both surveyors come in and testify about the mechanism, the manner that they use, the mechanism, all the, everything they used and what they relied on. And the court would find which was more accurate. And in fact, if they found that yours was more accurate, either you could sue the property owner, or they could come back for another variance.
No. That's silly. Okay.
Okay.
Just curious, thank you.
All right. Anyone else who wishes to comment on this application? Okay, is there anyone? Is it broadcasting?
It's not broadcasting?
No, I'm asking.
Yeah, it is not broadcasting. They are working on that, so we will have to just go ahead without that. People can just call in and zoom in still.
Okay, you think that's still...
Yeah, Lisa?
Well, apparently, I mean, people are zooming in.
Yeah, people are zooming in. Lisa? Wait, she says we are in silence in Zoom land?
No, we're not.
No, you're not, right? Diane, you're there? No?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this application? Hearing nothing, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, that brings us to number three, Verizon Wireless, nine dash 11 Raymond Avenue.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the ZBA. My name is Scott Olson, and I am from the law firm of Young Summer. I represent Verizon Wireless. And we actually do have a few, I have a few of the team members for Verizon on the Zoom call right now. Mike Crosby is there. He's the Verizon Wireless RF engineer, and a few other folks. So it may be appropriate, at some point, he may chime in if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. Thank you.
Have you gotten any correspondence from our, the expert that we hired? No. So Mike Musso is on the line right now?
Yes.
And Mike, are you there?
I am here, yes.
Okay, super, good. Yep, so he'll be able to talk to us after we...
Okay, great, go ahead.
So I'll just provide a brief summary, and obviously, please, you know, feel free to ask any questions. But what we're looking to do is install what we commonly refer to as a small wireless antenna. Actually, I think this board is familiar with that. We've done a few already in the town. The last one we did was at the Marina. This is very similar to that project in that it's a roof-mounted antenna on the existing building at 11 Raymond Avenue. And actually, it's on, the antenna will be on the penthouse up there. There's some minor equipment that's associated with the facility, and that will be located on the wall of the penthouse. Because it's in the ATC zoning district, and because your zoning law does not allow facilities in that district, we need a use variance. Again, very similar to what we needed at the Marina site with last year. As this board is familiar with, because you did it before, there's a public necessity standard that applies to public utility use variances. Your traditional use variance standard is not what's applicable. Essentially, the public necessity test involves, we have to demonstrate that there's a need for this facility at this location, and we have to demonstrate that it's a minimal intrusion to the community. In our application, I believe it's exhibit six, nope, it's exhibit seven. Oh, and that's wrong, too. I apologize. Exhibit three is an analysis, a comprehensive analysis by Mike Crosby, the RF engineer. And he goes through the analysis as to why this is required. I'll summarize it. Essentially, you all know that you have a cell tower out there, right on this property, it's the flagpole. That's the problem. That is, the capacity being generated in the area that we're proposing the new site, this site here cannot handle that. And so it's creating a capacity deficiency that it creates significant coverage gaps, dropped calls, and that's why we need to put a new facility up on the property we're talking about. The top of the penthouse is 44 feet tall. The top of the antenna that we're proposing will be 51 feet, so it's basically seven feet taller than the penthouse roof. That, in a nutshell, is what we're looking to do, basically. If this board approves the use variance, we then would go to the planning board for site plan approval. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions. If you have any questions for our engineer, again, Mike can just jump right in. Thank you.
All right, now I think I'm going to ask Mr. Musso?
Yes.
Mr. Musso, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and so where are you in relationship to this application?
Well, right, I've been retained by the Town of Poughkeepsie. This is the first time that HDR is working on capacity of a wireless application review. I'd like to give you a little overview, and then maybe answer some other questions. Had a site visit last Tuesday. I got into the area, looked at the application materials, in particular, the existing cell sites in the area, justification report, and application overview, and importantly, the drawings on what's being proposed. Also, ran up to the rooftop. Michael Welty was there on behalf of the town also, and two of the applicant representatives, Brian Sarchi, who's a site acquisition person, and a person from Tectonic, who's charged with visual impact analysis. So we have the application materials. I want to run through tonight verbally what will be asking the applicant in terms of supplemental information that we feel is necessary. And we are working on a technical memorandum that will go, a single memorandum that will go to both this board and the planning board. So that's sort of where we're at with our application. I just had a couple notes, I think, to give you in addition to that. The applicant representative has now given an overview. These are considered a small, he said a small facility, sometimes called a small cell facility. I know you have towers in your community and in surrounding communities. This is an infill site. It's not looking per se to provide much in terms of coverage footprint, as you might see on all those maps that I'll translate into our tech memo and talk about those. But it's a capacity site for the 4455 corridor and that commercial area around Main Street and Raymond Avenue. There were two agencies at the Over rocker or Town Hall site that attest to a capacity shortage and a meltdown and trends. We're looking at those now. We're also looking at an inventory of some of the other surrounding sites in the area. So I may be asking some information of Mr. Crosby to supplement some of the existing surrounding sites if need be. We're looking at visual assessment, and during our field trip, we noted it would be really good to have a couple simulations that are done for what this project would look like. And I understand the applicant took pictures on December 7th, when I was out in the field, and is looking to produce some before and after photos. This would be from an historic property to the south. I think it's a former school that's being converted under a separate project. And also from the Trinity Church located north of Main Street, looking back. I think that would give this board, and certainly the planning board, some additional perspective in addition to that cross-section drawing. This is not a macro site in that sometimes rooftop facilities, including one very close to this, that houses, I believe, T-Mobile and Sprint, where there'd be a series of antennas, sometimes nine or even 12 panel antennas. Verizon's proposing here is in a canister, a single canister antenna, which top height would rise about seven feet above the existing penthouse height. So we'll also look at, aside from the visuals that are taken and the simulations I spoke about, we'll also look for recommendations on maintaining the site and its actual look in terms of color matching, or maybe some textures that could be used. And we've based that on experience on similar sites. I've certainly worked, not only with small cell nodes that you may have heard about that are on existing utility poles, but also small rooftop sites in a few different communities that we serve. So we have looked at some similar applications with this. Let's see, there is also, I think importantly here, radio frequency emissions report done by SiteSafe. Again, that's another of the applicant's vendors. We'll take a close look at that, and I think I will have a question or two regarding the directionality of the single antenna and the compliance at street level. I will say that this cell site will be, will be in accordance, will be operating within the parameters that are currently set forth by the FCC. And I think this board maybe is aware of municipality's ability to comment or not comment on health, but it's something that HDR always likes to look at, and it's an important point. So we'll certainly take a very close look at that. Our tech memo, as I said, it would be, it would be addressed both to this board and to the planning board. So talk about the use variance. I do agree with Mr. Welty's memo on the public necessity, the public utility necessity test for wireless applications. We will look and to address that, all the information that we need is in. There are a couple code sections, including the Arlington Town Center District that governs and is the reason for this use variance. We'll make sure that the, whatever applicable code or codes for the town are satisfied. As I said, we'll look at health, we'll also look at safety and structural. And we'll also, as we always do, will provide a number of recommendations should the variance and the site plan eventually be approved. If that happens, what are the recommendations in terms of operations, in terms of compliance moving forward, et cetera? I do want to make a note also that the application and Mr. Crosby's RF statement, it looks at both low-band and high-band frequencies that Verizon is licensed to use in the area. And is, I think you know, it's not just about phone calls anymore, or sending texts, but wireless facilities are used more and more. And the trend is that existing macro sites, like the flagpole, monopole outside of the building, they do need to be supplemented at times. And this type of solution, we're seeing more and more of on behalf of our municipal clients. So we do have a little bit of work to do, but in summary, you know, I've been to the site. We'll fold up any supplemental information needs in writing to the applicant. We'll copy both the ZBA and the planning board on that, and we'll continue moving along with the application review this week.
Let me ask you this, then. Do you expect that you'll have something to give to the applicant, and the applicant will be able to respond to you by the next meeting, or do you need more time than that?
If I could respectfully ask, the next meeting in January is what date?
January 10th?
Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to get my questions, clarification, and info needs in as soon as possible this week. And I think that would give the applicant some time, based on the nature of what I foresee myself asking. I think that would give them time to provide something for January 10th.
Okay, does that sound reasonable?
Well, I'm glad that you brought that up. The only question we have is that, or the issue we have, is the FCC shot clock. That is a federally mandated timeframe within which all municipal boards have to act. For small wireless facilities such as this, that are located on rooftops, that timeframe is 60 days. That timeframe has already expired last week.
60 days from the applicant, from the application?
From the receipt of the application. It doesn't, and I know municipalities all the time say, well, it's, we didn't determine complete, and the FCC has said that's not the issue. It's 60 days upon receipt of the application. If within those 30 days, then the municipality says, hey, you're missing certain things, then the timeframe can toll, but that hasn't happened here. So technically, the shot clock has expired as of last Tuesday, so I think either way, we're going to need to try to do something to extend that. My concern upfront is that we've worked with this town on several projects before, and this sounds like it's going to take longer than those other ones. And it's, this sounds like it's going to take actually longer than if we were proposing a new small wireless tower facility, which is a 90-day timeframe. And I know that's, you know, probably relatively new to municipalities, but it's actually been in effect for about three years. So I think the town, and the applicant, and Mr. Musso, we all have to work to figure that out, because we really don't want to be in a position where the town, and I'm not saying you're delaying anything, but we don't want to be in a position where this doesn't get resolved until March of next year. That's six months, and that's would be just way too long for us. And I know Mike has, I'm very familiar with Mr. Musso, and I know that he's, he has a review process to follow, but at the same time, this is a small wireless facility. This is a very simple facility. We certainly don't want to see it overcomplicated. It's like I said, we have the health information in here that we are fully compliant with the FCC requirements. We have a letter of non-interference in the record. We have a viewshed analysis that shows you that there are no buildings that really will be, that should be able to see this. That's in exhibit five. We are going to take those pictures that were asked of us, but based on this limited viewshed map, this facility is not, it's not going to be very visible at all. So again, that's just a federal mandate that has to be dealt with.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add to that, this is Lisa Cobb, the attorney for the ZBA. I think that some of the things that were in Mike's, Musso's list just now of things that he was go, is going to look at, I think I heard compliance with the town zoning. That, for example, is something that we've already done and is, doesn't need to be part of his review. So what I would suggest is that we can work with Mr. Musso to tailor what it is that he needs for his portion of the review, and then hopefully get that to the applicant as soon as possible, so that the applicant could then get it back to the board. And what we may need to do in order to not further delay this application is perhaps give the applicant an extension of time if they need it to respond, so that we can have responses in prior to the next meeting without having the full, because I don't know that the board will need the full submission deadline. We don't have to renotice this for public hearing, for example. So we have all those clocks that we don't need to worry about for the next meeting, and it will be a continued public hearing. So that would be my suggestion to move things along.
Do you have any...
So, yeah, so I guess what, we are where we are today, and so clearly it sounds like there's information that's going to be coming. So if the ZBA is not in a position to render a decision tonight, and we would like you to, but I'm also...
I think we'd like to hear from our expert. I assume that, I assume that you'll be able to resolve any issues that he has.
Yeah, I understand. So what I've been going to, I'm sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to say, if we could at least agree at this meeting to extend the shot clock, and I can follow it up and memorialize it in writing, just to and through the next meeting of...
January 10th.
The 10th, if that's acceptable to the board. At least we get it to that point. Mike will get us his information, or his questions, and we'll get responses as soon as we can.
Lisa, does that sound reasonable?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Do any of your other people want to speak?
I don't, I don't think, unless they tell me, go ahead, I don't think that's necessary right now.
Okay. All right. Did anyone from the board have any questions at this point?
No, no questions.
All right, then, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this, I'd ask that you maintain your comments to three minutes.
Yes, I'd like, my name is Leslie Rubenstein, and I'd like to speak, but I would like to delegate my time to Michelle Squires.
Okay. You can, if you put your mask on.
And you go to that microphone over there.
The first thing, if I may?
Hold on, Michelle.
Yep.
I just need to swear you in.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
The first thing I want to say is...
Can you please put your mask up? Thank you.
The first thing I want to say is that I happen to be ES-sensitive, if I may, I just wanted to share this.
We can't, I can't hear.
She'll be by... I'll pass, I'll pass.
Mask, nothing to do with it.
I'm ES-sensitive, which basically means...
Michelle, please wait till you sit down, and you have the microphone in front of you.
No video, okay.
Thank you.
What I'd like to say is that, first of all, I'm ES-sensitive, which basically means that my body can feel high levels of RF microwave radiation. There are about 30% of the population that experiences the same thing, but they don't know that's what it is. You know, you're texting, your fingers go numb, headaches, fatigue, your ear has pressure when you're on the phone too much, fatigue, headaches, seizures when it gets really bad, neurological problems, twitching, you know, some of the commercials that you see on television, skin reactions, things like that. So that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm here. The other reason is for the rest of the population who isn't yet ES-sensitive, I'm speaking for them as well. This tower, or this, I'm sorry, this small wireless telecommunications facility, I object to that in the, at the ATD. And if you see a map of what happens with, and this is put out by an industry, an industry paper, it shows you what happens in the area of one of these small wireless facilities. And so God forbid you're in that area of where it's going to, the radiation's going to fall, that's not good. Everybody here on this board knows about the FCC, the case, that was the Environmental Health Trust versus the FCC. This is in August, August 13th of this year, and it, the court, the second highest court in the land said the FCC's regulations that Mr. Musso is going to abide by, and Verizon, of course, wants to abide by, are, were deemed arbitrary, capricious, and not evidence-based. So those are the guidelines that we're gonna be using to guide, you know, how much wireless radiation we're going to all be exposed to. I went to the site, that area of Raymond Avenue, upon request by one of the business owners in the area, and I took readings at that location. I knew full well, prior to walking to that location of Main and Raymond, because I took measurements for DeeDee Barrett, who never shows up at her 12 Raymond Avenue office, and I took measurements in that area. And what you have there is 12,000 microwatts per meter squared, and you have 6 volts per meter or higher, because my acoustimeter doesn't measure anything higher than 6. So what we're considering is putting up another antenna that the people that work, or, you know, are employed, or go to school, or happen to recreate in that area, go to businesses, they're gonna be exposed to even more, because of course it's accumulative. Not only is it accumulative, but you have converging signals from two other antennae, because there's gotta be something, you have converging signals right at that location, everybody. And you're gonna add more to a rooftop and have it all coming down. So no one's doing measurements. I don't know if Mr. Musso is interested in doing measurements of RF, but even so, he and Verizon and all the other carriers are abiding by FCC regulations that are now deemed unlawful. So I don't understand why we would do that. Now, the information I just handed out, everybody, has to do with the connection between, now they're seeing a connection between disease, COVID-19, the expression of COVID-19, and excessive exposure to RF microwave radiation, similar to antennas, small, they call it small wireless facilities, telecommunications facilities. So we're all masking up, we're all masking up, right? We're walking into places, we don't have the freedom of breathing, to be afraid of COVID, but yet we're going to irradiate our town, our people. And on top of that, your insurance that Mr. Musso is going to try to, you know, make okay with Verizon and everything, it doesn't cover, there's a radiation exclusion. There is no insurance policy that will have a radiation protection to the policyholder. They always exclude radiation when it comes to telecommunications facilities. Now, why do they do that? Do you think Lloyds of London is stupid? They set the standard for the insurance industry. So our own code talks about making sure that, you know, the general liability and insurances are all there. Other aspects of our code that are existing right now also make it difficult.
You only got a few seconds left, if you want to...
Is that six or three?
It was six.
Okay. There's so much more I can tell you in addition to the fact that, and if I can just close with this, Ithaca, the city of Ithaca, as well as all these other cities, I'll give you the, all the list of cities, including Fishkill and Woodstock, they're all creating ordinances.
You've seen the numerous documents that'll be part of the record.
Yeah, and you've seen those. And these ordinances that the city of Ithaca set in place protect their residents, but we're not protected very well. If we, if we argue that insurance point that is in our code, where everybody says, well, I'm not liable, and then Verizon says, I'm not liable, well, what happens to the citizens? We're not covered.
Can you wrap up?
So you see my, you see my point poll, and everybody? I don't think we should be adding more until the FCC reexamines their guidelines, or we do fiber to the premises, which we already paid for in our tax money, which Verizon will, the industry doesn't want to do because it's more expensive.
Can you wrap up?
So anyway, we should be doing that, or until the industry decides to use frequencies that don't change the way our cells use oxygen, calcium, or water. And that's what these frequencies do. Thank you for letting me speak with the mask on, or my chin, or whatever. Thank you very much. Please don't offer, don't give this variance. If you want to talk to me some more, I have so much more I could say. Six minutes wasn't enough, but thank you for the over, you know, allowing me to go over.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience who wishes to comment on this?
Anyone on Zoom? Doesn't look like it. Think we're okay.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to adjourn this to the January...
I'm sorry. I made one, two points counter to this. Even though there was supposed to be sworn testimony, there's misinformation provided. And I, all right, I'll just say that the FCC's regulations have not been invalidated in any way, shape, or form. I'm very familiar with the EHT case, and that did not in any way state that the FCC regulations are inevitable. It had to do with a very specific process of whether they decide, were determining whether to upgrade their regulations, and there were some procedural mistakes made, having said that. So the FCC regulations are in full force and effect, there's been no injunction at all. I guess I'll just, you know, stay, leave it at that. As well as the fact that the Telecommunications Act, once we demonstrate compliance with the FCC, does not allow municipalities to consider health effects, because there are no health effects. Thank you.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to adjourn this to the January 10th.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's adjourned, January 10th.
Thank you.
That brings us to item number four, Bragdon Minor Subdivision, 10 Conklin Street.
I'm going to recuse myself.
All right. Okay, did you state your name?
You don't have any...
Actually, I think...
They probably do.
The hallway.
Let's see if they do something in the hallway.
Just give us a second.
Yes, sir.
To the left.
I think they've probably got a little...
Okay, I'll try that.
Okay, Jack.
Susan.
Mike, Mike, she's got us missed.
Oh, you have a sprain.
Ah, thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Yeah, you don't mind. Okay, thank you.
Really can't hurt.
Hello, my name is Sarah Bragden.
Ms. Bragden, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
All right. Why don't you describe your application?
Well, I, let's see, my application is for a variance, for two variances. I would like to subdivide my property, which is 1.56 acres, and I would like to subdivide it into two lots. And one lot would be 0.618 acres, and the other would be 0.942 acres. That's a little bit different than the original, which, the original survey. So if you'd like, I can give you the revised survey and the revised lot sizes. So that's that. And my intention is, there's a barn already existing on one of the lots, so what I would like to do is renovate the barn into a living space.
When you say, as a living space, do you mean, what do you mean exactly?
A living space, a house.
A house, okay.
Yes, a house.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's really the crux of my application. I think the variant, there are three variances involved. One is for a setback for the existing house. It's 19.7 feet instead of 30 feet. And the house is existing, so I'm not exactly sure what would happen if I wasn't granted a variance. I couldn't move the house at this point, so, and the other two variances have to do with the lot sizes, which are supposed to be one acre each in my zone, which is R20. And they are going to be less than one acre.
Okay, and that's because there's no town sewer there, right?
Exactly. Otherwise, it would be half an acre, and that law was placed on the books in 2014. I'm not exactly sure why it was changed from half an acre to an acre at that time. But it was, so now I'm applying for these variances.
Okay. I'm gonna read a letter that was submitted to the record. I believe the town's recognition that Conklin Street, oh, that's the wrong one. As an adjacent property owner, I have no opposition to the minor subdivision of 10 Conklin Street if there can be restrictions tied to proposed Lot 1 prohibiting the construction of any new structures. Three Conklin Street properties opposite 10 Conklin Street have recently received historic landmark designation by the Town of Poughkeepsie. The barn at 10 Conklin Street, part of proposed Lot Number 1, is eligible for Town of Poughkeepsie Historic Landmark Designation. I would recommend that the town encourage the owner to have the property designated. The application for the variance makes several references to the historic significance of two barn structures that would be part of proposed Lot 1 property. Application, page 2. B, for area variance applications. Provide a description of the proposed activity with regard to the following standards. One, whether an undesirable change will be reduced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of area variance. Applicant response, the proposed lot line revision will not change the character of the neighborhood. The plan is to renovate existing early 19th century structure, which will benefit the neighborhood by maintaining its historic character. B, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. Applicant response, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the neighborhood. There will be almost no change to the environmental, the environment, seeing as the building to be renovated is an existing structure. I believe the town's recognition that Conklin Street has three significant structures worthy of being designated as Town Poughkeepsie Historic Landmarks directly opposite the 10 Conklin Street site, proposal should protect the character of the neighborhood by prohibiting any new structures to be built on the Lot 1 parcel. In her own words, the applicant has stressed in several sections of the application that her intention is to save and renovate the barn structure to maintain the historic character of our neighborhood. I fully support any changes to the barn structure that make the project viable, provided they are sympathetic to the existing character of the street. If there are unforeseen costs or structural issues that arise on the barn renovation, restoration, that lead to abandonment or revision of the project, as proposed in this application, the town and historic homeowners of Conklin Street should have protection from a tear-down and new build that would block views and change the character of our historically recognized street forever. There should also be a restriction against any buildings built in addition to a successfully renovated, restored barn on the lot, such as a freestanding garage. Conklin Street does not need additional structures added to an already congested footprint. The applicant herself references in her proposal the small size of New Hamburg lots. Please restrict the variance to the wishes that the applicant states, which tie this project specifically to the barn. Because of the location of New Hamburg on the Hudson River, the historic character of the Hamburg depends not only on its excellent examples of 19th century vernacular architecture, but on view sheds and ties to the river that are woven into the fabric of this historic community. I reach out to the town to help preserve what they themselves have designated worthy of protection by granting of landmark status throughout Conklin Street. Regards, and that's Richard Levitt, 15 Conklin Street, New Hamburg. Do you have any comments about, about anything in that?
The only comments I have is that, you know, this, this governing board is an administrative board, it doesn't legislate, is my understanding. And so if my variance, there's precedent for granting variances of my size, and it's within the zoning codes, and there's precedent for it, I would say that that is, that should be enough to be granted a variance.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No, no questions for you.
Art?
Not right now, thank you, no.
No.
Phyllis?
I just have to ask some questions to clarify. The second lot will be the bigger of the two lots, correct? And that's the lot that will have the two barn structures on it?
Yes.
Your plan is to make them, both of them homes, or one of them a home?
One of them.
One of them a home. Do you have plans for the second one?
I don't have plans for the second one. At the moment, I'm just trying to even get the health department to approve even the small dwelling that I would like to make the barn into, which is only a two-bedroom, so it's a small septic. So for anybody who's afraid in my neighborhood of some kind of huge monstrosity going there, I really don't think it's viable, seeing as how difficult it's been for me to even get... I really don't think it's viable, seeing as how difficult it's been for me to even get, you know, a small septic in the area. And my intention is, I mean, you should maybe have a little bit of background of who I am. I'm not a stockbroker and I'm not a mogul, a real estate mogul. I'm a Juilliard graduate dancer from New York City who's an artist and I have a real sensibility for history and beauty. And I think the neighborhood can rest assured that anything that I would do would be along those lines. I also would like to say that I can't foresee the future. I can't say that if I, if this goes through and I drop dead, that, you know, something else wouldn't happen. I can't guarantee anything to anybody, nor can anybody. It's, this is, I think, I, my intentions are clear by my proposal. And that's what I think we're deciding on here. We can't hypothesize about every possibility that might go on in the future either. So I think that's all I really need to say to help assuage the fears. I think we're all on the same page here. I think we all want the same thing. We want to make this barn into something beautiful and livable. Whether that's going to be able to be happened will determine, the barn is falling down as we speak. I tried to start this a year ago. So in the last year, the barn's continuing to fall down, depending how long it takes, depending on the pandemic, depending on the building codes, how long it takes for a builder to come in. I mean, the barn could basically fall down, in which case I would need to build something there that would be two bedrooms on where the barn is and take it from there. So that's my plan.
Wait. Did I just finish my question? Oh, I'm sorry. So they're gonna be on septic systems?
Yes.
With leach fields?
Yes.
And I'm unfamiliar with how you get your water?
Yes.
Are you on a well?
No.
Okay, so you have town water down there?
Yes.
Okay. And you talked about needing to redo the barn. And I, I'm missing the point where we have to subdivide in order to redo the barn.
Oh, financially.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have no further questions, thank you.
The change that you described, how does that change your request for the variance for?
How, I'm sorry, how does what change?
You said, if I understood, you said that the sizes of the lots changed a little bit?
Yes, they changed a little bit, yes.
So how does that affect the app, your application and the number of feet that you want the variance for?
I believe there's a piece of paper that's there with, I, did you copy?
It just has?
It shows the change in feet, the revised, the difference between.
Okay, so the.
The original and the revised is 3,400, 3,045 feet and 99, 3,045.99 square feet is the difference.
So Lot 1 gets closer to one acre, which is the minimum. And Lot 2, which is the, where the existing house is now, gets a little bit smaller, like 0.07 acres than it was.
Alright, so does it need to be re-advertized?
Uh, it's a good question.
Can you read those numbers for me again one more time? I'm sorry, Lot 1.
Gets a little bigger and Lot 2 gets a little smaller.
I don't think so, that it, I think that this is a type of cha, by, was the number by about 3,000 square feet or so?
Just about, yeah.
I, I think that that is not something that, where someone would say, I'm going to attend the public hearing because the Lot 1 is going to be 37,000 square feet. But if it was gonna be, you know, 37,000, 3,000 square feet, I'm not going to attend the public hearing. I think as long as everyone who received notice of this application, you know, which was properly done, I don't, I think that's a, a de minimis enough change to the proposal that the public's ability or desire to attend wouldn't be affected by that, which is really the test that you use for a public hearing, for re-noticing. Did that answer the question?
It does.
Okay.
Alright, I don't have anything else. Tony, sorry. Tony?
Yeah, I have something. With reference to the letter from Richard Levitt, there's a statement that was just read into the record. Basically, the, the third to the last paragraph in Mr. Levitt's letter says there should also be a restriction against any buildings built in addition to a successfully renovated slash restored barn on the lot, such as a freestanding garage. So I guess the appropriate question is, do you have any intent to do anything else other than renovate the large barn? Or is there an intent to, to build a freestanding garage, for example?
Well, that's a good question. I've had the Highway Department come and look at the three options I have for where a garage should go. And they seem to be okay with all the three options. And I'm going to discuss it with my engineer and we're going to design one on the site plan and then present it to the planning board.
So are we talking about a garage or a driveway?
I'm sorry.
Cause I, I know you were talking to the Highway Department about a driveway location.
Yes, a driveway.
The question is about a garage, a structure.
Oh, okay, yeah. No, I haven't had any discussion with anybody about a garage. I don't plan to put a garage at the moment, I'll put it that way. And, yeah, it's not in my plans. I actually haven't thought about it. I guess I need time to think about it and I also need to know what the rules are around that. And whether that would change your decision-making about it and what the laws are regarding it, basically. I have to look into it, I'm not sure.
So Lisa? That would change one variance for variance of 1,000, 16,626 feet on Lot 2. But reduce the one on Lot 1 to 5,000, I'm sorry, 2,518 feet and change.
Okay, that doesn't change my answer.
Okay, alright.
Paul, do you have a copy of the other letter that came in today? And did you want to read that one into the record also?
Yes. Tony, you have any other questions?
Well, no, that's the main question and I don't know to what extent it would affect our decision or if it would affect our decision. But normally, if you're looking to do something like this, you want to be as forthright about the, and complete about the information as possible. So if there's a possibility that you might want to be doing a, adding a garage sometime in the future, I think, you know, the responsible thing, I, that's, I don't know if that's the right word. But anyway, a good thing to do would be to, would be to include that as part of your application. You know, like I intend to, for example, renovate the large barn into, into a house and, and I may also be building a, whatever, a two-car garage, for example.
I don't have any plans for that because I'm trying to reduce the footprint as much as I can and, and appease the fears of my neighbors as much as I can. And I know they don't want any further structures. And I'm not, I do, it would be nice to have a place for my car that has, that's covered so that in the winter, I don't have to shovel my car out. I mean, that would be nice.
Okay, it just, it's, just a comment?
Yeah, I don't need to have it, but it would be a nice thing to have.
I mean, it sounds like you're, you're, like you yourself are planning to move into the renovated barn.
Yes.
That's your, is that your?
Yes, I, my plan is, I'm, I'm older now and I need to figure out, my, my children are gone. I need to figure out what I'm gonna do with the rest of my life. And I have a very large house and it's too large for me to take care of and manage and pay taxes on. So I, my intention is to have this solve the problem of my retirement. So I move into a smaller building, I'm in the neighborhood still and I can live out my life. And that's my intention, a garage, I don't intend to build a huge garage structure, no.
Okay, thank you.
And Larry, do you have any questions?
No.
Alright, then I do have another letter from Daniel Fannin, Commissioner, Town of Poughkeepsie Commission for Historic Preservation. "As the owner of the landmark 1860 house at 19 Conklin Street and as Commissioner for the Town of Poughkeepsie Commission for Historic Preservation, I am writing regarding the application for the subdivision of the number 10 Conklin Street. The Board is rightfully concerned as to the importance of this historic circa 1840 barn that Ms. Bragden Brant, Brant, Brangon?
Bragden.
Bragden, hopes to convert to residential. And I understand that keeping the barn from demolition and for adaptive reuse is the sole basis for the Board's considering granting the three variances to divide the property. Please know that the people of Conklin Street and the Town Historic Preservation Commission share their concern. First, know that I and the neighbors on Conklin Streets, of course, hopes to make the barn a livable space as it also serves the purpose of maintaining the historic character and architecture of this special area of our hamlet. I have attached a few photographs so that you can have a clearer picture of what's at stake here." Do you have a copy of this?
No, sir.
Do we have a copy we can give?
Yes.
And then there's the picture of that 1840 to 45 barn. Does that picture reflect what it looks like now?
It reflects the front, it's the backside that's completely demolished.
Okay. "The barn is a Gothic board and batten beauty and one of the few remaining architectural buildings from the era when New Hamburg had farms on the hills above the Hudson. Although all the research and paperwork were finalized and ready in the spring of 2021 for the barn and its accompanying smokehouse at number 10 to be landmarked in the town, Ms. Bragden withdrew her application saying that she wasn't sure what she was going to do with the property. The Commission very much hopes to put the barn under the protection of landmark status and is very concerned for its preservation." A landmark street. "At the moment, there are three town landmark houses on Conklin facing the number 10 property and an additional four are in the application process, meaning that by late winter 2022 or early spring, virtually all the buildings on the north side of Conklin will be landmarked facing the single property at number 10 on the south side. New Hamburg is important in that it is one of the rare Hudson River villages that is intact as to its 19th century architecture and sitting. And as this night, as this 1890 photograph of Conklin Street shows, all of these landmark 19th century buildings remain today. All the buildings remain except for one, the main house at number 10. The 1840 farmhouse below was bought by a developer in 1997 and was raised to make room for the current outsized prefab house and two-car garage that sits there today. The sad truth is that Conklin Street has already lost one historic house on this property, so we're very concerned about the possibility of losing this historic barn as well. Our concerns, let me make it clear, let me make it clear that the Neighborhood and Historic Preservation Commission wants nothing more than Ms. Bragden to have her dream house in a restored barn. It's a win for everyone. That said, the reality is that making the barn into a livable residence may well prove too complicated and/or too costly to achieve. I have restored four period 19th century houses over the years myself and assisted in countless others, so I know a difficult project when I see it. Since the inability to convert the barn is a distinct possibility, your granting variances might later end up meaning that this newly divided property with its allowance for septic would allow the demolition of the barn replaced by new construction. That is unacceptable to this community. New construction on the site would adversely affect the architectural significance of Conklin Street as well as the views of the Hudson River enjoyed by the homes on the north side of the street. In other words, the Conklin Street neighborhood fully supports Ms. Brank, Brankin's application, but only as she has stated and not beyond that, or to allow for any new construction. Thank you for your consideration, that's signed Daniel Fannin. And there's a postscript for the record. "The site plan submitted to the Board shows a, the small barn near the Conklin Street side of number 10." This is not a barn, it's an 1840 to 45 fully intact smokehouse that was also withdrawn for landmarking last spring. It's one of the few period smokehouses still standing in all of New York State today. Inside, there are open rafters with aged wood, iron hooks and remants, a large brick fireplace and chimney designed to force smoke into the interior of the building and fitted with cast iron grates and plates marked as "Made in Poughkeepsie" at the 19th century town watermark ironworks, waterfront ironworks. Everything still works and stands ready to smoke holiday hams for the new year. It's too important to lose." And I'll, I'll offer that to the record.
On the second page of the letter that you just wrote, we, the, the comment was that the, although research and paperwork were finalized and ready in the spring of 2021, just a few weeks ago, for the barn and its accompanying smokehouse at number 10 to be designated or landmarked in the town, the application withdrawn because you wasn't sure what was gonna be done with the property. What exactly would have the effect on that property have been? If it was, I'm finished, cause maybe I don't want you to misunderstand. If it had been designated landmark property, what would that have done to your current plans? How would that have affected them?
Well, I think there are more restrictions.
I'm sorry?
I think there are more restrictions that are placed on landmark buildings.
Why did you redraw, withdraw the application?
I didn't withdraw the application, that's a misstatement in the letter. I never, I never agreed to apply, I never signed anything and I never withdrew anything. That's a misstatement.
Okay, so you didn't withdraw the application, but there was a move to designate the property or these buildings as historic buildings?
My neighbor came to me with papers already drawn up and asked me to sign them. And I said, I'm not ready to sign them yet because I don't know what the implications are of designating this historic. And I think probably it would place more restrictions on me and, so I didn't sign, but I did not withdraw anything.
But it was a move to designate these buildings as historic buildings and?
Well, somebody else decided they wanted to and came to me and asked me to sign. But I didn't. Yes, somebody.
Okay, that's, that's all I.
Yeah, somebody did do that. I, I also would like to remind everybody that in these pictures, there, there is a house that was built up on the hill on Academy Street at the top of the, and that's, that was built in, and that's not in character with the entire neighborhood too. So there has been precedent where people have bought property and done what they want to do with it in my neighborhood. And there's also one thing I would just like to finish with. And that is to remind everybody and maybe inform everybody about the creation of the Board of Appeals. And if I could just take a second to read a paragraph that I have from the New York State Department of State on Division of Local Government Services, Zoning Board Appeals. And it's a nice paragraph about the zoning board saying, quote, "The creation of a Board of Appeals with discretionary powers to meet specific cases of hardship or specific instances of improper classification is not to destroy zoning as a policy, but to save it. The property of citizens cannot and ought not to be placed within a straitjacket. Not only may there be grievous injury caused by the immediate act of zoning, but time itself works changes which require adjustment. What might be reasonable today might not be reasonable tomorrow. The observations concerning the importance of Boards of Appeals will be relevant as long as zoning exists. They should be engraved on the door of the meeting room of each Board of Appeals and recited by Board members along with their oath of office." I would just like to remind, you know, everybody about the concept that I own this property, I pay taxes on this property. And if it's within precedent of the town and it's within the zoning codes, I think it's fair that I should be able to do what I think is right with my property. I have been an upstanding citizen of my community and I think people know me, they like me, they have benefited from my generosity. And I have really, I just want to assuage the concerns of people who think, yeah, that's all I really need to say, is that I. yeah, that's all I really need to say, is that I, I think it's important that everybody keep in mind that I have rights to do certain, to do what I need to do to live out my retirement on my property if it's within, you know, precedent and code of the town.
Okay, so just so you understand, it's outside the code. That's why you're asking for a variance. But the standard here for the zoning Board of Appeals is to balance whether the benefit to you outweighs any detriment to the environment and to the neighborhood. So that's the balancing test that we're going to take.
Yes.
Based upon what you've said and what everybody else has said.
Yes, I understand. It's also based on precedent, though.
Well, I would say that that's true. If there was another situation just like yours, and I don't think there's another situation just like yours in the Town of Poughkeepsie.
So are you saying that I'm setting precedent here or?
If there's another one that's just like yours, you would be setting precedent, yes.
If there was another?
If there was after you, you would be, you would be setting precedent if there's another one just like yours that comes after you.
Okay.
Okay? But it's unlikely that, that anything is that similar to yours. Yours is a unique situation, as most are, okay? But anyone else from the audience who wishes to comment on this?
I would like to.
Ms. Knightley?
Kingsley.
Kingley, sorry.
Ms. Kingsley?
Yes.
Ms. Kingsley, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Okay, what would you like to say? And please keep it to three minutes.
Okay, now I've prepared a statement, so if you bear with me. So my name is Pam Kingsley. I live at 9 Conklin Street in New Hamburg, directly across the street from Sarah Bragden at 10 Conklin Street. Regarding the variance for the setback of the house at 10 Conklin, my husband Chris and I have absolutely no issues with that. Regarding the variances for subdividing property, we have concerns. We know that it is Sarah's intent to build a house within the footprint of the barn, retaining, if possible, as much of the original barn as would be structurally sound. If Chris and I had 100% certainty that Sarah would be bringing this project to completion, we would give our wholehearted support of the requested variances. But as Sarah and I discussed earlier today, she can't guarantee that. Any number of things could happen that could result in Sarah deciding not to embark on the project or not be able to bring it to completion. And then now, the now subdivided property being sold to a new owner. Were this to happen, now the only limits on a house to be built on this lot would be the Town of Poughkeepsie zoning regulations. Meaning a house with a much larger footprint than the one Sarah intends to build would become a possibility.
And the size of the septic.
Whether permitting, my husband Chris and I sit on our front porch most every single night and look down the river. This portion of Sarah's property is directly in our line of sight, worse so even than her house. Without a guarantee that any built, whether Sarah continues to own the property or not, would be limited to the footprint of the barn, we can't support this request for a variance as it carries a risk to our own quality of life and the overall character of Conklin Street. Should things not work out, as I know Sarah intends, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Anyone else who wishes to comment on this? And the person raising your hand, I think you can unmute yourself?
Yeah, I think I'm unmuted. Am I not?
You are, you are unmuted.
Okay, my name is Peter Garrity. I live at 5 Conklin Street, right next to.
Mr. Garrity, excuse me. Mr. Garrity, excuse me. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes, I do. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I live right next to Pam and right across from Sarah. And my only thought is this. I don't, I don't even know what a variance is. But I do trust Sarah's artistic sensibilities, sensibilities as a whole. And my, my thought is that that barn is, has been in existence for over 100 years, 120 years, 125 years, however long. It ain't going to last another 125 years. It may not last another 25 years. That barn is not in great shape. And Sarah is, it seems to me, is the person who has the passion and the desire, the will. She's working on it. She's working through it. She's designing. She's the person to do it. And what happens if Sarah does not do it? I'm not worried about a, a new person coming in and raising the barn and building up some modern monstrosity to block all of our views. I don't think that's going to happen, for one thing. As Ms. Bragden has pointed out, it's a very small footprint as far as the septic is concerned. You can't get a big house in there, I don't think, anyway. But I, I just believe, I think that barn is beautiful. And I think that it would be an amazing piece, amazing thing for it to be reconfigured and, and saved and, and for its historic nature to add to the New Hamburg, you know, to our sensibilities here in New Hamburg. And I think Sarah is the person to do it. And I think if she does not do it, who else going to? Who else going to suddenly pop up with passion to do it? I don't think that, that'll happen. Thank you very much. That's all I wanted to say.
Anyone else? All right, so let me ask you a couple of questions. Is the way you picked the subdivision, is there any particular reason you did that? Just to try and make them both about the same size or?
Uh, the subdivision was the line, you mean, the property line as it was drawn? Uh, to make the last, yeah, the engineer really engineered that, made that decision. It was based on trying to find a proper place for a septic and complying with the Board of Health Regulations regarding the reserved septic area.
Okay. Anyone else who wishes to comment on this? Hearing none, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing the word "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There was one refusal, and that motion carries. You can either, you can stay and wait or find out no more.
Thanks.
That brings us to item number five. Thomas Pompey, 38 South Jackson Drive.
Hello?
Would you state your name?
Thomas Pompey.
Mr. Pompey, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
What do you want to do?
I couldn't hear.
Why don't you describe your application?
Okay, what I'd like to do is replace an existing two-car carport that was granted a variance, I think, back in the 70s by, to the prior owner, and replace it with a two-car garage of the same dimension, same footprint, with a room above. That will be, the roof line will connect. It'll be built right in, straight line. See the existing height of the building. It's not going to, it's not going to encroach anymore on the property next to me.
Okay.
The structure there now needs work, number one. You know, it was built probably back in the 70s. And I think it would definitely improve the look of the house and this, and improve the value of, you know, my neighbor's property also.
And are you going to do anything else with the house itself?
Yes, I, I will, there'll be a new roof, all-new siding, new driveway, windows, et cetera. I mean, the whole house is kind of going to be totally renovated on the outside. There'll be a new walkway put in because we'll probably have to cut some of what's in there now, leading up to the front steps. But it'll be on the same footprint that's there now. It's basically, I'm just going up, and it will tie into the existing roof that's there. It's not going to be any higher than what's there. I won't be obstructing anybody's views. There's nothing, there's no view in that neighborhood, other than someone else's house. So I'm not going to be obstructing any type of view whatsoever.
All right, Christine?
I think I've answered everything. It won't be any higher or any closer to the property.
No, it's exactly, the footprint's going to be the same.
That's all. Thank you.
Art?
Yeah, I do have one. Have you given any thought to water runoff and a new roof onto your neighbor's property? Will water be shed to his property or to the, to your property?
It's not going to be any more than that's there now. There's, there's gutters on the carport. There's going to be gutters, obviously, on the house. So it's not going to be any more surface area than they're already used.
And the roof slopes to, to the front and rear of your property, right?
Correct, and to the side, yeah.
Thank you.
It's going to be a poured concrete floor, obviously, for the garage. With, there'll be, you know, footings all around the foundation, obviously. And there will be, the, the room upstairs at this point is just going to be storage. I haven't decided what I want to do with it yet, but it will be accessible from inside the house.
Okay. Tony?
No questions.
Tony?
Uh, no questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Okay. Anyone from the audience who wishes to comment on this?
I just want to comment. I brought Jeff Marcus here. He will be the contractor slash builder on the project. So any technical things, you could probably direct to him.
Uh, there's no one in the?
Yeah, hi, this is Leo. I'm the, I'm Mr. Pompey's neighbor directly behind him. My only question was, because I couldn't see the actual application. I just wasn't reading the PDF.
Hold on one second.
I just need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sorry, what was your name?
Uh, Leo Morales. I'm located on 18 Jackson Drive North. I am directly behind, so my backyard joins with Mr. Pompey's backyard.
Okay. And what are your comments?
Uh, the only thing I just wanted to make sure and just clarify that the, that the dimensions, like you mentioned, stay the same. There's going to be no, basically, you know, building back basically towards the back end of your backyard. The only reason why I commented on that is just because, as you mentioned, I only tightline here, but in everybody else's house and everybody else's yard, my only concern would be just of privacy. Um, but I guess if that second floor is just for, for storage, not really for a bedroom, because it literally, that would align with our master bedroom. So that's the only question and comment that I would add.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? Larry, did I ask if you had any questions?
At this point, it's going to be storage. I haven't decided what I'm, what I'm going to do with the room, that's all.
What did you say, Larry?
Nothing bad.
All right, okay. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
At this point, it's just going to be storage. I haven't decided what I'm going to do with the room.
Okay. All right, any, any other questions? Then I'll move to adjourn this.
Second adjourn.
Uh, close. I move to close. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, sing the word "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's carried. That brings us to item number six.
I am.
Vincent?
Thank you. This is last week. I don't have to do this.
Okay, you can, you can either wait or call in the morning. Vincent Talafiero? Sixth Congress Court.
Hi, Mr. Talafiero. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
All right. What do you want? What would, what's your application?
So the application I submitted to the Board was to get a fence, the variance to put a fence on the side of my house, which is facing Empire. I wanted to put a six-foot-high fence to cover the, all of the utility wires, the generator, the Generac box, the satellite box, and all the other ISRs that I have on the side of the house, which is facing the street of Empire. I put in the application, which obviously was denied. So what you see on picture number four is the way it looks now, after the generator and all the other utility wires and plugs have been put in. I think it's a complete ISO, and I don't like the way the side of my house looks. The attachment, the other attachment photos, number five shows a front view of how it looks right now. And number six and seven shows the proposed fence I would like to put up, which is five foot, coming away from the house, which will clear the generators towards the back of the house, six foot high, and the length of the fence would be 20 feet long, which will parallel the back of my house and cover all of the wires, plugs, and the generator. That's what my proposed application is.
Okay, and, and what type of fencing will you have, will you have mine?
Uh, wooden spike fence.
Okay, similar to the, what's just up the street?
Yes.
Okay, let me ask you this. Do you need to have it boxed out? Do you know what I mean?
As opposed to just?
Just a straight line and perhaps some vegetation?
I mean, do I have to? I would like not, I would like to have it boxed out only because, it was not going to be a box. It was going to be an actual door that you can go in and out of. So it would not be closed door. So I know the rendition shows it looking like a boxed fence, but actually that side coming from the side of the house to the corner and would be a door, which I can open and close.
And what about on the other end?
Nothing, I'll be open. Because that's the, that's the end in the back of the generator, which I believe and think it should be open and not closed.
Okay. Christine?
No, no other questions.
Art?
No questions.
Phyllis?
So when we went out to the house, there's that evergreen, right?
Yes, that's at the end of the house, yes.
Is the fence going to be?
Past that?
No, is that, is it going to be inside the evergreen or outside the evergreen?
So.
Or is it going to be in the, you know, is the evergreen going to be fenced in?
The evergreen is not going to be fenced in, no. The evergreen is outside the fence. I'm sorry. I didn't know what you were saying, Ms. Paul.
I'm sorry about that. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, no, evergreen is outside. So if you envision five feet, the five feet would just pass the generator with a foot to spare, and then it would be in between the evergreen, yes.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
No questions. Tony?
Uh, just to clarify, you're looking for like an L-shaped enclosure?
Yes.
With the, with the L that's facing Congress Street? That's where your door would be?
Correct.
And then blocking the side view and then, and the side, the generator would be open?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Diane?
Um, have, have you considered like lattice, possibly something that would be just a little less wall-like, that would?
Let me start by, somebody else?
Pardon? I didn't hear, I didn't.
You can answer. Somebody else spoke up, but you can answer, so.
You have to describe what you mean. You talking about something like a, um, a visual that you could see on the top as opposed to being a spike fence?
No, a lot, a lattice work fence that would, would basically not make it look as, as wall-like and, and it would just let more airflow into the generator area, and it would camouflage all of the camouflage all of the apparatus, but it would not, um, create, you know, a wall with a wall. You know, your house is a wall, the fence is a wall, it's six foot high. I mean, it's really going to make a statement. So would, I mean, I'm just wondering if you've considered something that's going to be a little less solid?
No.
Visually solid?
No, I have not considered that, no.
Okay.
Because I, I don't believe that it would suit what I'm trying to do, which is camouflage all that busyness. Um, you will still be able to see it if, but I, I'm not sure what you're describing.
Yeah, the little squares or diamonds, do you know?
No, oh, you talking about like a fence with, has something flowing through the, through the fence? No.
Okay, okay, I, I understand. All right, thank you, that's all.
Okay, Larry?
No questions.
Anyone from the audience wish to come out of this application? Anyone zooming? Okay. Were there any other questions? Okay, then I move to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that carries.
I do have, I'm sorry, I, I just thought of something. I apologize if I... The question I have, if it's approved, um, obviously I can't dig in the wintertime. The variance is open-ended?
It's good for a year. I think I just start working on it within a year.
Thank you.
All right, and I move to take a five-minute break. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll be back in five minutes. All right, folks, we're back. All right, so, um, we're back, and let's go on order of the agenda. Number two, 58 Alder Drive. This is a request for a variance, a side lot variance of now five feet, four inches, um, for a wooden platform. Anybody have any concerns about this one?
She took away what I was concerned about.
Okay. Any, anyone? So let me get, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, Tony, you're not going to vote until, um...
Except for, uh, correct, right?
Yeah. All right, so Diane, did you have any problems with this one? Okay, Larry, any problems with this one?
Diane and Larry, you're on...
On number two? Okay. Then Christine, do you mind making a motion?
Sure, do we have the findings?
Oh, yeah, I suppose I'll do that. I'll offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change would reduce the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be treated by granting of the variance. It appears to be consistent with the neighborhood. These are kind of tight lots. Whether the benefits offered to the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance, uh, the only other place to put this is in the backyard, and that does not satisfy, uh, the desires of the applicant. Whether the requested area variance is substantial. Mathematically, it is, um, but based upon the closeness of both properties, I think its impact is kind of minimal. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, uh, there's no evidence that they'll have any, uh, physical or environmental impact. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Okay, now Christine. Whatever you're composing.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number two. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. Sound off.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right. Then all those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then that motion carries. Number three was adjourned. Number four, 10 Cochrane Street.
Wait a minute. I'm, I'm recusing myself.
That's, that's right. So let me offer these findings. Well, let's, let's discuss it first, I suppose. So this is a proposal, get changed, uh, proposal to do a couple of different things. One is to subdivide it. So Lot Two needs a variance of 16,626.38 square feet, and Lot One would need a variance of 2,518.08 square feet. And then, um, the front yard setback requires a variance of 11 feet. Okay, so does anybody have any concerns about this?
I, not really, I don't, I mean...
Okay, so, um, I think that there's been a lot of discussion about the intent of the, of the, of the property owner and what she intends to do. But as I understand this, this is simply, um, the test is the bet, the benefit to the applicant, if that outweighs, uh, the effects of the safety, health, and welfare of the neighborhood. Okay, and although there's been a lot of conversations about what she wants to do with it and protecting, uh, the historical nature of it, um, I don't, the subdivision itself is, is, is the application. And so I think that everyone kind of, I think focusing on what she wants to do with it is, is different than just the subdivision. And I think that's what we have to focus on. Does it, anybody have any concerns about that one?
Uh, the only concern that I have is, it gets back to Mike's, uh, report about the condition for the approval of the, of the, uh, septic systems by the county. So that, I'm not concerned with it, I just think that it should be...
You think that's a, okay.
It should be conditional upon approval.
Yeah, I don't think the lots would be viable without that. That was the reason I decided that, to put that in there. Um, you know, so I guess without that, you don't necessarily want the subdivision to, to go forward because...
Right. So, I mean, that's the only concern I have is, is perhaps we, I think your suggestion, Mike, if I, if I read that correctly, was that we make it conditional upon, upon approval by the county, uh, Department of Health.
Yeah, we could make that a condition.
Yeah, that's the only concern I have.
That really is the biggest challenge they're going to have. I mean, you know, having read some of the correspondence back and forth so far, um, you know, they have a lot of work to do still. So, I mean, that has to get proved out, I think. Um, that's why I included it.
Um, how about, is there any way, can planning have some input into the concerns of the neighbors? I mean, I think they're valid concerns, but I don't think that, that we can address them. Is it, can the planning board...
Um, I mean, I see Lisa just unmuted herself. Did you have some thoughts about that, Lisa?
Well, it seems, I know that this application was potentially before the Historic Preservation Committee, and it seems to me that that would be the appropriate venue even more than this board or even more than the planning board. Because what the planning board is looking at is similar to what this board is looking at, which is the subdivision of the property into two lots. And what the planning board will be making sure is there's, you know, septic and there's water, and that, um, the, the lots are, you know, lots in this area are of this size. So there's really not something that the planning board per se would be able to do in this instance. Um, we have had instances in the town where there were people... We have had instances in the town where there were people who have submitted things to the Historic Preservation Committee Commission. Or alternatively, you know, it may be that someone wants to suggest that there be a Historic Preservation District in this area that might encompass all the homes in the area or something like that. But in any event, I think the answer lies more with the Historic Preservation Commission, which eventually would make a reservation, recommendation to the town board as opposed to either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals.
Would, would the planning board have any input on... Are they, so, at some point, she's gonna have a building permanent or estate. Will she have to do a site plan?
No.
The, she has to do a subdivision plot. As part of the subdivision plot, you have to show where the driveways will be, where the house, the structure will be, et cetera, et cetera. And that, the plot gets approved by the planning board. But typically, the location of the house on the plot is not a, it's not the same as a site plan. And because this is a single-family residence, it would not require a site plan, per se.
Right. There might be, there could be a building envelope or something like that if the, if the physical conditions of the site would warrant something like that. But I'm not sure that that would necessarily preclude, you know, something different than what's there now from being built. It would, you know...
I, I think that the neighbor, I mean, there's, there's a big difference in elevation in the, in the property.
Yeah.
And where the barn is now, regardless of what happens there, I think that would have minimal effect on the neighbor's view. However, the upper point, if, if someone were to build up there, that certainly would impact many of the neighbors. Is there a way to, and I'm not sure, although I suppose you could build something anywhere. Is there a way to, the planning board can kind of limit that?
Well, I mean, there is a setback requirement in the district, so 30 feet, but I don't know if that's enough to make that difference for the elevation.
Yeah, probably.
There is a height limit in the code. So, you know, based on the topography of the site, that would have some effect. But I, I haven't done the analysis to say that would or would not impact the view.
Yeah. I don't wanna ignore the, the neighbor's concerns. I just don't think that we can address them.
Well, I mean, arguably, this board could put a condition on the variance. The issue for the board, though, is are you benefiting the community, per se, by that condition? Or are you benefiting one neighbor by that condition? And, you know, if you, I mean, it may be, there may be something that you want to do to limit to where on the property of, where on the property of residence could be located if the barn were not able to be there. But, you know, it's, it's the balancing test that you have to keep in mind. And, you know, the, the property owner does have rights as a property owner.
And, and wouldn't where the, the septic has, it has to be decided by the Board of Health where the septic's going to go? And then the house and anything else has to be worked around that?
Correct. And in this instance, part of the reason, I think, for the additional requirements for zoning is Department of Health now requires the ability to show redundancy, sort of an extra, the ability in case you needed a backup septic, a place to put it. So, there really are pretty significant limitations on what can be done on small lots that are not connected to municipal sewer. There, the, the amount of land that needs to be kept free for septic is pretty substantial. The smaller the lot gets, the more substantial it is.
So, most of those lots in New Hamburg would not be able to meet that, those criteria today. You know? And it does, you know, it means that the, you know, and that absent sewer, which I don't think is coming that way in any foreseeable future anyway, is, you know, that's gonna be a limitation no matter what.
Exactly.
And it's your understanding that she hasn't gotten Department of Health approval yet?
Not yet, no. There has been correspondence between her engineer and the Department of Health. The Department of Health has had some questions back, but that still remains to be worked out, which is, at this point, that, that is typical. That would be something we would expect to have more fully fleshed out before we have our subdivision approval. And then ultimately, you know, it will be on the plot, the, the Department of Health.
Okay. So, do we need to make that condition?
It's in my staff report, so if you want to make that, I mean, you can make that part of your motion.
Okay. But you're not, planning is not gonna approve the subdivision if there's no...
There's no variant, if there's no Health Department?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right. Do you mind making this motion?
You were doing so well. Yeah, I gotta go. Okay. All right. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings set forth by the chair, which are...
No, there's a staff report.
Staff report, okay. Staff report, which includes Board of Health approval.
As a condition.
As a condition. And I don't know what else you said. Okay. What else you said?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this one? All right. Tony, you'll be voting on this one? So, all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? And, and one recusal.
So, just for the record, the vote is seven oh, but one recusal, with Tony voting as the alternate.
All right. So, that brings us to item number five. On page 38, South Jackson Drive. This is an application for a variance of 14 feet to replace an existing two-car carport with a two-story garage. All right. Anybody have any concerns about this one? No? Then let me offer, make these findings. Whether an undesirable change will reduce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This is in the same footprint as the existing carport. It's, it's now two stories instead of one, but that doesn't really have any impact on, on the character or the neighborhood. It's consistent with the neighborhood. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Based upon the existing structure, this is the only mechanism to attain the applicant's desired result. Whether the requested area variance is substantial, mathematically so. But since this is an existing, replacing existing, has no further impact, it's, it's minimal. And whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect on, effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There's no evidence that there'll be any physical or environmental impacts. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny this application. I would offer those findings. Felicity, do you mind making this motion?
I don't know. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing and the results of site visits by the board. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any, any comments on this one? Any concerns? Okay. Said all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us item number six. Six Congress Court. This is an application of variance for a six-foot fence in a front yard where only three and a half feet are allowed. So, any concerns about this one? Diane, you, you had some concerns about the...
I, I mean, I know we often talk about, I mean, it comes up a lot about, you know, having this kind of bunker look of just a massive wall. Especially when, you know, there no, I don't believe there's windows on that wall.
Yeah. That, no.
So, it, it is kind of a, a wall outside of a wall. And I, I do think lattice or something where it wouldn't show all of the apparatus, but it would soften the, the statement, wouldn't be a bad thing. But that's, I guess that's just to call on aesthetics and it's really, I do think it needs to be six foot, whatever it is. So, but that was my only concern, is that something softer might add more to the community's visualized...
You know, I had to tell you, I was just reading the application. I was against it until I went down there and realized that just up the street, there's a whole line of fences similar, similar to this. So, I, I, I think that kind of minimizes the impact on, on the neighborhood.
I mean, I, I would love to just make a suggestion that they maybe look at options of, of lattice. Just because if he doesn't know what it is, it may actually suit him, but nothing that has to be done.
I think he probably knows what it is.
Okay. Okay.
And let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will produce in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. This is consistent with other properties that have similar fences along that same unique property. Whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Since this is a, has, has a corner lot with two front yards, the only way for him to achieve his desired result is with an area variance. Whether requested area variance is substantial, it is mathematically. However, I think the impact is, is kind of minimized. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. There's no evidence that will have any physical or environmental impact. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, it certainly was, but that's not a reason to deny the application and I would offer those findings. Tony D., do you mind doing your last motion?
I make a motion to approve the area variance request in item number six. I move that the board, this decision is based on a review of the application, a testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing and the results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair. So moved.
Second.
I got a question.
Can we, can we at least ask the gentleman to plant a few more shrubs down that long row?
We could make a condition. He has that one evergreen there.
To soften it, yeah.
I think that that's pretty reasonable. I'm a little concerned about that it's boxed in like that, so I'd like to see a little softening.
Some greenery.
There is a, there's another little planting right at the other corner. So, yeah, I would just like to see him to add some evergreens.
And I think there's also another planting that's going to be outside of the fence. There's like a square.
Right. That thing that's, that's kind of bricked around?
Yes.
There's a small tree in there.
I think I'm gonna make that grow bigger.
Yes.
So, is that a condition?
I think some foundation plantings. Without getting too excited about it, but... Okay? All right. All right. So, you'll add that some foundation...
Okay. So, the, the approval of this variance is subject to the following condition, that the applicant add some foundation plantings along the 20-foot section of the fence in order to soften the impact on the neighborhood. So moved.
Second.
Any, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right. That brings us to other business. The planning board is requesting lead agency on first student site plan. Can you describe what that is?
Yeah. It's a bus depot in an industrial, industrial zone that has existed for a while but never had proper permits.
Fitch Brothers, right?
Fitch Brothers. Yeah. I guess it was a dairy at one time, right? But anyway, so the, they're before the planning board for a site plan and special use permit. And hopefully try to make it a little better than it is.
All right. Then I would move to make then the planning board lead agency on that.
Second that.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. It's a, something carrying over from, I think, two meetings ago. There was a reference to an above-ground pipe that was discovered and was, that was draining something. Was it ever determined what it was draining and what it was draining into?
I, I, I think you should probably, next time it's on the planning board agenda, I would, I would, but if you want to send that question to us, we can try to... I don't remember, Lisa, if you remember, had that been resolved yet or not?
No. Excuse me. No, the short answer is it has not yet been resolved. There were some suggestions is what they thought it might be, but, so, Mr. Fankel, that correct? As Mike says, that's a question directed, to be directed to the planning board. But if you email us, we'll make sure that it's...
Yeah. I'll email to remind you because, you know, having a mystery pipe there is really an issue of concern. The other, other thing was whether they had remediated and whether the, the DEC had signed off on their remediation for the spilt fuel, the fuel spills on the hazardous waste.
Also a question for the planning board. This board is simply being asked by the planning board to permit the planning board to take the lead on the applications that are going. So, there is actually nothing pending before this board at this time. And this board doesn't have any information on the application.
Okay. So, so you would also, the planning board would also be responding to the issues brought up by, I think it was Cina Hudson?
Yes.
They mentioned receiving a letter from them? Okay. That's all I wanted to find out.
Okay. And all those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And I want to thank Tom for his, for his years of service for the ZBA. And congratulations and good luck on your new role. And we'll see you, see you in January.
You'll be missed.
All those in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. Adjourn.
Good night all. Good night Lisa.
All right. So, last month, they talked about a holiday luncheon. I completely forgot about that, so...
Doing something for Mary?
Yeah. So, what would you like to...
Do I want just me? On the 21st? The 21st is... I was gonna email everybody tomorrow after...
Okay.
Okay. But...